I call this meeting to order. Seven PM on May ninth, two thousand twenty-four. Madam Clerk, has the warrant been duly posted and a quorum present?
Yes, it has.
Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the states of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. This meeting is being conducted under the provisions of Mass. General Laws, Town of Lee Bylaws, and Town Meeting Time. I would like to remind everyone of a few procedures before we begin. All registered voters of the Town of Lee will have a right to speak. Each person may debate once, and each debate will be limited to five minutes. After all members have spoken, a member may debate a second time. No one may debate more than twice per motion. Debate may be further limited or extended by a two-thirds vote. A person that is not a registered voter of the Town of Lee will require a majority vote of representatives to speak. When speaking, please state your full name and address, and please use the microphones. All debate must relate to the main motion and directed through the moderator. Before making any motion or debate, you must be recognized by the moderator. Voting procedures, which I'm sure you're all familiar with, we're going to start with a voice vote. If I can't determine or call the vote, or if a division is called, we'll open it to electronic voting. Okay, we're going to do a test vote now. What do we want to have as the question? Does everybody feel good tonight?
Sure.
Yes.
That's a yes or no. It does take a little time, Rachel's working on it, but it does take a little time to get on the screen, so be patient. Obviously, everybody probably knows how to operate the controllers. So, yes, no, abstain, and just check your number on the back to make sure it's up there on the screen and that it's working. You can change your vote up until we close the vote.
What if it's not on the screen?
Well...
Do you have another page up here?
You'll have to come up and get another one, right?
Yes, what number do you have?
Three twenty-four.
Can you just return your clicker and get a new one? If you have any clickers that are over the number three hundred, you can exchange it for a lower number.
Any, if anyone didn't hear that, any clicker that's above three hundred, exchange it to a lower number. Is the new controller working?
Yes.
Okay.
So, blue means that you have cast your vote. Once they close the vote, it'll turn red or green, so you can verify that you voted
All right, we're going to close the test down, and we're going to get started. Tonight, we will be considering twenty-one articles. Article one, is it consent agenda? Majority vote.
Was that, was Mike's clicker supposed to turn a certain color?
Blue.
There's a question, yeah, it turned blue, then your vote was cast.
Were you here for the test?
If we do end up using these, Cornelia, if it doesn't work, then the clerk can give you a new one.
All right, article one, do I have a motion?
I will read the following motions for Article one through five, Consent Agenda, and if there are no objections, they shall be moved to be approved by a single vote, all five, the first five articles. Hearing no objection, Article one. I move that the town vote to receive the reports of the Select Board, Town Accountant, and other officers, boards, commissions, and committees of the town. Article two. I move that the town vote to fix the salaries of all elected officials as required by law for the fiscal year beginning July first, two thousand twenty-five. Article three. I move that the town vote to authorize to transfer the sum of eight hundred dollars from the sale of cemetery lot receipts to the Fairmont Perpetual Care Trust account. Article four. I move that the town vote to authorize the board, the Select Board, or other town departments with the knowledge of the Select Board to apply and accept grants from the federal government, Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and any other source to execute any documents in connection with said applications and to expend grant funds for purposes received without further appropriation. In Article five. I move that the town vote to expand Chapter ninety sums for fiscal year two thousand twenty-five as provided by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts to repair and pave the town's roads.
Is there a second? Member Bailey seconded. Seeing none, all those... Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes. Next article, Article two, or Article six, I should say. Previous fiscal year expenditures, forfeits, vote. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town transfer the following sums from free cash for the purpose of paying previous fiscal year's invoices. Highway Department, Auto Plus, May sixteenth, two thousand twenty-two, sixty-one dollars ninety-eight cents. Lee Supply Company, May eighth, two thousand twenty-three, two hundred and fifty-seven dollars and sixty-nine cents. Water Department, USA Blue Book, May thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three, two hundred and fifty-eight dollars and fifty-one cents. Wastewater, USA Blue Book, May thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three, six hundred and forty-one dollars and ninety-nine cents. Fire EMS Department, Mass. Fire Tech, February twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-three, one hundred and fifty-two dollars and fifty cents, for a total of one thousand three hundred and seventy-two dollars and sixty-seven cents.
Is there a second?
Second.
Member Renier seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Say aye. All those opposed, no? Motion passes. Article seven.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town appropriate the sum of twenty-two million, eight hundred forty-seven thousand, seven hundred and one dollars and forty, seventy-four cents for the maintenance of the several departments of the town as published in the warrant. And to meet that appropriation, transfer three hundred and forty-four thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars and forty-eight cents from overlay surplus and raise and appropriate twenty-two million, five hundred and three thousand, five hundred and eighty-one dollars and twenty-six cents.
I'll second it. Finance Committee recommends approval on this. I will read each line item. Yell out "hold" to discuss a specific line. Then we'll vote on the non-held line as a group, and then we'll proceed with discussion and individual votes on the held items. Moderator, one hundred and fifty dollars. Selectmen, seventy-five thousand, one hundred and thirty-three dollars and fifty-three cents. Town Administrator, one hundred and nine thousand, two hundred and thirty-four dollars. Finance Committee, five hundred. Reserve Fund, seventy thousand. Compensation Reserve, seventy-five thousand. Town Accountant, one hundred and twenty-one thousand, three hundred and eighty-one dollars. Assessor, one hundred and twenty-six thousand, six hundred and seventy-five dollars. Treasurer/Collector, two hundred and eighty-six thousand, nine hundred and fifteen dollars. Town Council, fifty thousand. Information Tech, hundred and nine thousand, three hundred and eighteen dollars. Town Clerk, seventy thousand, seven hundred and forty-one dollars. Elections Registars, twenty thousand, three hundred. Land Use, seventy-five thousand. Conservation Committee, five thousand, three hundred and fifty, I'm sorry, eleven thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars. Planning Board, eight thousand, eighty-one dollars. Zoning Board, two thousand, five hundred and seventy-five. Human Resources is zero. Town Reports, thirty-six hundred. Office Equipment Maintenance, thirteen thousand, two hundred and sixty. Staff Development, four thousand. Police, one million, four hundred and thirty thousand, five hundred and twenty and seventy cents. Fire EMS, one thousand, one hundred and ninety-six, five hundred and four... What did I say? Well, a little off. Fire EMS, one million, one hundred and ninety-six thousand, five hundred and forty-five and fifty-eight cents. Building Department, one hundred and thirty-eight thousand, seven hundred and forty-two. Gas Inspector, six thousand, five hundred and twelve and ninety-four cents. Plumbing Inspector, eight thousand, three hundred and twenty-six and thirty cents. Weights and Measures, eight thousand. Electrical Inspector, eight thousand, eight hundred and eighty-three dollars and five cents. Emergency Management, two thousand, two hundred and fifty. Animal Control, fourteen thousand, two hundred and three and thirty-one cents. Do we have a hold?
Yes.
On emergency management?
No.
Animal Control.
Animal Control. School Department, eleven million, one hundred and seventy-nine thousand, eight hundred and sixty-seven dollars. DPW Administrator, fifty-two thousand, seven hundred and ninety-five dollars and twenty-eight cents. Highway Construction and Maintenance, four hundred and fifty-eight thousand, seven hundred and twenty-four dollars and thirty cents. Snow and Ice, four hundred and seventy-three thousand, one hundred and fifteen dollars and fifty-eight cents. Street Lighting, forty-six thousand, eight hundred and eighty-one dollars. Forestry, forty-seven thousand, four hundred. Sanitary Landfill, twenty-one thousand, seven hundred. Cemetery, ninety-four thousand, five hundred and eighteen dollars and twenty-four cents. Parks and Playgrounds, twenty-four thousand, seven hundred and twenty-seven dollars and ninety cents. Public Building and Raldy Building, thirty-seven thousand, four hundred and ninety-seven dollars and sixty-seven cents. Public Building Memorial Hall, sixty-three thousand, two hundred and ninety-five dollars and nineteen cents. Board of Health, seven hundred and sixty-five dollars. Trittown, one hundred and ninety thousand, four hundred and sixty dollars. That was Trittown Lee. Trittown Lennox, two hundred, two hundred and fifty-three thousand, five hundred and thirty-seven dollars and eighty-nine cents. Trittown Stockbridge, one hundred and forty-one thousand, five hundred and nine dollars and fifty-two cents. Breen Center, two... Holding the Breen Center?
Sorry, yes.
Two, Breen Center, two thousand, eight hundred and sixty-seven dollars. Community Health Program, one thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. Cable Advisory Committee, one hundred and fifty dollars. Council on Aging, seventy-four thousand, nine hundred and one dollar and eighty-two cents. Lee Youth Association, sixty-two thousand, nine hundred and sixteen dollars. Veteran Services, fifty-eight thousand, eight hundred and sixty-three dollars and seventy-two cents. Youth Commission, twelve thousand. Lee Library, three hundred and twenty-six thousand, nine hundred and ninety-eight dollars and sixty-eight cents. Sandy Beach, sixty-one thousand, one hundred and three dollars. Historic Commission, four hundred and eighty-five dollars. War Memorial Flags, two thousand, nine hundred dollars. Culture Council, forty-eight hundred dollars. Long-term Debt, one hundred and eleven thousand, seven hundred and ninety-seven dollars and twenty-six cents. Short-term Debt, three thousand, one hundred dollars. Berkshire Regional Planning, five thousand, fifty dollars and seventy-one cents. Berkshire City Retirement, one million, one hundred and twenty-eight thousand, eight hundred and forty-eight dollars. Workers' Compensation, one hundred and twenty-eight thousand, six hundred and fifty-eight dollars. Health Insurance, three million, three hundred and nineteen thousand and fifty-one cents, or fifty-one dollars and sixty-seven cents. Life Insurance, twenty-one thousand, four hundred and ten dollars. Medicare, one hundred and eighty-five thousand, two hundred and fifty-five and ninety cents. Police Medical, two thousand, thirty-three dollars. Liability Insurance, one hundred and twenty-seven thousand, seven hundred, I'm sorry, one hundred and thirty-four thousand, seven hundred and seventy dollars. Other Insurance, sixty-four thousand. That's it. So, we got the hold item is...
Hold on a minute.
Yes.
So, we vote on this?
Any discussion on the non-held items?
Discussion on the non-held.
Yep, okay. All those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no? Motion passes for the non-held items. All right, held items. Selectmen?
I'm Cornelia Callisher, and I just, this is a comment, a positive comment, I want to thank the Select...
Sorry, Cornelia, can you state your address also along with your name, so everyone can hear?
I'd prefer to just say South Lee. So, I, what I want to say is that...
Excuse me, Cornelia, I just want to make sure, is that, is that okay with just stating the town? Okay, thank you. I just wanted to be fair to everybody.
Yep.
Thank you, sorry.
So, what was I going to say? I want to thank the Selectmen, and I know that part of the increased budget is that you're going to get a very tiny, but a little bit more in your budget, and that's, and that part of this is also towards the Administrative Assistant, and I thank you all for your work. That's all I want to say.
This is not going to stay.
Okay, seeing no more discussion. We're going to vote on the Selectmen line item. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next up, Conservation Commission. We got a hold on it, I think. Yep, Conservation.
Monica Ryan, one sixty-five Laurel Street. I'm just curious about the increase and what it represents. It's kind of a jump, over a hundred percent.
Mr. Moderator?
I'm not against it, I'm just curious. Thank you.
Yeah, so the Conservation Commission has not had an agent, and the Board used to kind of do it themselves, and it's becoming more and more difficult to do that. So, we're actually just using the services of a shared agent that serves a number of towns in Berkshire County, and so the extra, most of the money is towards that. It's about a five thousand dollar buy-in for that, and we'll get a few hours a week so that if there is a complaint, somebody can go and actually check it out.
Okay, any more debate? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no? Animal Control.
So, this is, I don't know the Animal Control Officer, and it's not a complaint about them per se. I know they work very hard and need time off, so they have the weekends off and work Monday through Friday and have other responsibilities as well as in this role. However, there are many times that people do need to reach somebody on a weekend and they are not available, and I wondered if there was some kind of system in place where if somebody did need to call on a weekend. I had a neighbor who was distraught trying to find her cat, and then there was a wild animal that was needing help, how to reach somebody at that time. That was my question.
Good evening, everyone. Jim Willis, Trittown Health. Trittown Health covers Animal Control, and it's, the budget's fifty percent, and Lennox pays the other fifty percent. It's a part-time stipend position that an existing town employee uses, and we have policies and procedures that's on the Town of Lee website. Dispatch has his number, and he is available on the weekends, but we handle domestic cats and animals. We don't handle wildlife under Animal Control. So, if you're looking for more information, you can call the office or go onto the town website, but he is available, but it is a part-time stipend position, hence the amount of the budget.
How do you reach on the weekend? You call where?
Well, usually, you can call the Police Department or Dispatch, and they patch right into Animal Control.
You can call twenty-one hundred or nine-one-one is going to put you to Dispatch.
Okay, any more discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Motion passes. School Department.
That's me again, Cornelia Callisher. This one I have more of a comment on. This is a large amount of money, of our tax money. I do believe very strongly in child education. I'm not against that. I think it's important for our town. However, we have a small child population in this town, under, about six hundred students, and it's decreasing, and it's, every year, I ask the same thing. I did speak with Chris Britton, I thank you for your time and help in learning about some of these articles, and you're very helpful, and I want to thank you. But I'm concerned that Lennox does not want to join in our efforts, is my understanding, and what is our plan for the future of every year spending this much money on very few, very few children? Thanks. I would like some kind of answer on that.
Good evening. Mike Richard, Superintendent of Schools. Currently, in Lee, we have six hundred and twenty-two students. We have about a hundred and thirty-five employees in the school district. We appreciate, respect, and absolutely are exploring opportunities about what is happening with our declining enrollment. That is not something that's unique to Lee. That is something that is happening all across our county. We have explored superficially, if you would, the ideas of regionalization. At current time, we aren't finding any willing partners. It doesn't mean that that won't change, but certainly, our neighbors to the north in Lennox are content. As a standalone district, we do explore opportunities with our neighbors, but I think that you've seen other collaborative efforts not necessarily succeed. Again, that doesn't mean we can't continue to explore it. We did cut some staff from our budget this year, but we know that grant funding has diminished since Esser has shut down and will be no longer available as of September thirtieth. So, I appreciate the question, and I would welcome such a question at a school committee meeting in the future where we can further discuss concerns that anyone may have.
Thank you, Mike.
David DuVall. I'm just concerned about the administrative costs. Seems like there's a lot more cost for administration than there is for education. Some point, there should be a balance.
Thank you. Any further comments, discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no? Motion passes.
Do you ever ask for abstain too?
Excuse me?
Can you ask for abstain on some of them?
She wants to abstain. Okay, you want abstain? I'm sorry. Next up is the Breen Center.
Monica Ryan, Laurel Street. I've asked this question before, but I think that with everything going on in the world and locally, and with drug problems and people needing help with their lives, why do we only give like two thousand to the Breen Center? And is there something that we can be doing more as a town to support our citizens in their time of need? Mental health wellness is very important all the time, but I think it's ever more, and I just wish that we could contribute more and see more effectiveness on this so that we can have less sad tragedies happening. Thank you.
Yeah, just want, I'm happy to mention, actually, that in addition to what the Breen Center provides, we have incorporated a police co-responder now that is a social worker that works with Lee, Lennox, and Stockbridge through Trittown, and so they provide social services as well. This is a new program that we started about, within the last year or so.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay, seeing no more discussion. All those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Motion passes. Next up, Sandy Beach.
I love Sandy Beach, as you know, I speak to this every year. I see that there's no change in the funding, and again, I bring to the town the question about future thinking in terms of our long-term planning around the beach, to keep thinking about that, it's very important, as well as, I heard that we're going to do some weeding this year, and I hope we put the netting down because it's very weedy last year, and I hope the hours are more available, and perhaps when the lifeguards at the end of the year have to go to school, that we do like Lennox does, which has lifeguard not on duty, swim at your own risk, so that the beach can stay open to the existing hours that are posted. So, those are the things I would like you to still consider in negotiating the hours and accessibility, et cetera. Thank you.
Hi, Gail Ceresia, I'd like to talk on this subject. We recognize that the...
Address, Gail?
Oh, one sixty-one West Park Street.
Thank you.
Lee, Massachusetts. So, what I wanted to say was that we recognize that we needed to do more weeding last year. It was pretty bad, and I don't fault the director, I mean, who's in charge, it's just that we need more money appropriated for that, and I real, I don't know what that figure is, but I'm hoping that you could consider adding five... is, but I'm hoping that you could consider adding $5,000 onto this, you know, and then whatever the amount it would be to weed a couple more times than we did last year. That would really help out a lot at the beach. I mean, it's just not safe to have the vegetation, especially in the path where the beach is, where the regulated beach part is, to the dock. There's a lot of weeds there, and it's just not, it's just not comfortable swimming through it, quite honestly. Thank you.
Just mentioned, there is, right now in the budget, it's 7,500 for weeding, just to put that out.
Oh, you have it here?
So in their budget, I'm just pulling it up, out of the total 61,000, there's 7,500 set aside for weed control.
Oh, okay. I just don't think that's enough. Whatever's happening, there's, it's not being done enough, and maybe we need a tarp or something to block the weeds.
If you're going to speak, yeah, I'm sorry, can you, into the mic so everyone can hear you.
Maybe we need a tarp or something to block the weeds, but it really needs, it really should be weeded in the path going to the dock, maybe like 10, 15 feet out on each side. The kids like to use a rock out there, and there's weeds not far from that, so it would be very helpful. And I know that the bed and breakfasts and the hotel, it's good for our town, it's, you know, if you want to look at economics, it's very good for our towns. And then there's a lot of people who live here who really appreciate the use of the beach. Thank you.
Thank you, Gail. Any more discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor vote aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion passes. Next one, Berkshire Regional.
Monica Ryan Laurel Street.
Sorry, can you speak closer to the mic?
Sure. Monica Ryan Laurel Street. Isn't Berkshire Regional Planning the organization that really was not helping us through our recent issues with the dump? Not that I want to bring up the dump, but I'm just saying, as an organization, didn't they kind of stab us in the back at some point? Or am I wrong? Was it the wrong, am I talking about the wrong committee?
There was a concern, that there was a communication between Berkshire Regional Planning and the attorney for-
Closer to the mic, Bob.
There was a concern Berkshire Regional Planning was in communication with the law firm that was representing Rest of the River and Berkshire Regional. We were referred to as, I believe, the enemy.
Right.
And we were framed as an opponent, and we did, we did send a communication to them, letting them know that we were very displeased at that, and we didn't feel that they were representing us in a proper manner.
Did they ever respond with an apology?
No. They said it was a joke.
Gordon, you've been here for many years, so I just want to speak historically. Have we always paid something into Berkshire Regional Planning, you know, a certain amount every year for whatever other services they make? What other services do they do for us? Do we want to do this?
Yes, actually, the, we have always, and it's, I think legally our duty as part of the region.
All right, description.
Yeah. And also, they have, in the past year, they've also, I think that's why we have a planning board member come up who is with the master plan. They also do other things for us. And we basically had a problem with one particular individual. But they also have stepped up and given us a tremendous amount of assistance, I know with the master plan and with other planning that we do. So that's, if that answers your question.
It does. Thank you very much.
Just to note that the Rest of River Committee is dissolved now, so they don't have anything to do with that anymore.
Peter Blum, 75 Orchard Street. I just want to agree with what Gordon just said. I was the chair of the Master Plan Committee, which has been at work and has completed the work as far as the committee is concerned. We'll see what the planning board has to say, but we've completed our work in 18 months as opposed to the planned 12-month period for which the contract was entered. And I don't know what the number is, but I'm pretty sure that the support we received was worth a lot more than the amount of the contract, and the support was, I think, of excellent quality, unbiased, and very helpful, and I think they lost money on us, so I hope this is not the year that we cut them.
How you doing? Buck Donovan, Planning Board, also on Berkshire Regional Planning. I'm going to go down a few bullet points very quick. Master Plan, Open Space Rec Plan, Stockbridge Road Parcel Assessment they helped with, American with Disabilities Self-Evaluation, Hazard Mitigation, Mass Save, Digital Equity Plan, Brownfields Loan for Eagle Mill, 1.8 million. What else we have? A grant for our town planner that's on our agenda tonight, Complete Street Planning Project, and also group purchasing is all done through Berkshire Regional, and also a lot of community health is done through Berkshire Regional, if you're wondering what they do. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more discussion?
Charleston Alto, 290 Summer Street. Just a request of the moderator, this is my first time at a meeting. It would be helpful if the gentleman at the head table, when they speak, would identify who they are and what their position is in the town.
Can I give them an order? All right, any more discussion? Mr. Duval.
So I live on Stockbridge Road, and I haven't seen any kind of discussion about any plan that they're proposing there.
The work that they did, they did actually have a meeting, probably eight or 10 months ago, that was sent to residents of Stockbridge Road, but most of the planning they were doing was just looking at the terrain, soil type, things of that nature, just to see what options we might have for it. So anything that we actually do would come back to town meeting, so.
So they haven't come to any kind of decision?
So there will be, there will be a report, they're not finished yet, that will come to the selectmen for review, and again, it's just suggestions, they're saying that, you know, what the land could be potentially used for.
What land?
This would be the land, it's 170 acres, that goes from Stockbridge Road over to the Fairview Street area. It was purchased back in the 90s for a municipal golf course, which never happened, so.
Oh, that was used for grazing cattle?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And by the, that plan did not cost the town anything. It was grant-funded for them to do, so.
All right, seeing no more discussion, all those in favor vote aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no?
No.
Motion passes. That's all I have? One more? All right, I have nothing more.
No, nothing, I'll tell them.
Okay, next article. Article eight.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the following sums of money for capital expenditures of several departments of the town as follows. Town Buildings, Improvement Contingency, $12,500. Police, Ballistic Vests, Tasers, $45,000. Fire EMS, Communications Equipment, $39,600. School, General Fund Capital for HVAC, $100,000. Sandy Beach, Safety/Maintenance Equipment, $2,000. DPW Highway-
Excuse me, Bob, sorry to interrupt. Can we, can we tone it down over there, please? Mr. Duval? Thank you. Appreciate that. Okay, Bob, sorry.
DPW Highway, Paving Roads, $284,542. DPW Highway Asphalt Hotbox, $35,000. DPW Highway Extraordinary Infra-, yeah, Extraordinary Infrastructure Contingency, $12,500. Sewer, Extraordinary Infrastructure Contingency, $12,500. Sewer Meter Radio Replacement, $10,000. Athletic Field Tennis Court Repairs, $5,000. Town Buildings, Memorial Hall, $10,000. Town Buildings, the Library and Windows, $24,320, or total capital expenditures of
Second? Member Bailey, seconded. Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor vote aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Motion passes. Next, Article nine, Water Enterprise Fund Operating Capital Budget.
Mr. Moderator, Gordon Bailey, Select Board Member. Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to make the following appropriations to fund the fiscal year 2025 budget for the Water Department. We have Water Operations, $1,162,444.3. Capital Expenditures, $30,500. A Grant Match, $28,405, for a total of $1,221,349.3. And further, to provide for said appropriations from the following sources of revenue. Retained Earnings, $58,905, for a total expenditure of $1,221,349.3.
Second?
We have Article eight or Article nine.
Please, 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 please come up, uh-
Point of order.
Please, yep, okay.
We're on Article nine, thank you.
Second, Mr. Moderator.
Member Renier, seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor vote aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Motion passes. Next article, Article 10.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to make the following appropriations to fund the fiscal year 2025 budget for the wastewater department. Wastewater Operations, $2,507,221.10. And further, to provide for said appropriations from the following sources of revenue and available funds, or to take any other action relative thereto. User Charges, $2,100,221.10. Retained Earnings, $407,000, for a total of $2,507,221.10.
Do I have a second? Second. Member Jones, seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor vote aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Motion passes. Next article, Article 11. Omnibus Fiscal Year 2024 Non-Departmental Appropriations. Finance Committee Recommends Approval.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $717,475 for the following miscellaneous purposes. Fire EMS Bond Payment, $128,685. Paving Bond Payment, $150,390. Chamber of Commerce Advertising, $72,900. Chamber of Commerce Gateway Downtown, $14,500. Laurel Lake Preservation Association, $2,500. Berkshire Brownfields, $2,000. Downtown Lights Matching Grant, $79,500. Fireworks for Founder's Day, $1,000. BCAC Energy Readiness, $5,000. Greenagers, Belonco Park Phase Two, $5,000. VFW Main Street Flags, $6,000. Housatonic PCB Legal Technical from the Settlement Funds Free Cash, $250,000, for a total miscellaneous of $717,475.
A second, huh? Any discussion?
Just, just for the record, it is FY25, so there was a misprint there.
Okay, no discussion, all those in-
Okay, so this is not a critique on veterans in the town. I believe that we should honor them, and I love how the town is decorated in the summer with the flower baskets through the Chamber of Commerce, and their request for people to help with doing that. But I do question $6,000 on flags every, I forget what it is, every few years that we have to replace them, and wonder if we can maybe make a proposal in the future to have less flags or preserve them better. I know the weather beats at them, but it's a lot of money each year, every few years to spend in the town. And then the other one on the PCB Legal Technical, I totally believe we need assistance. Ironically, and this is like a pittance in terms of what we need, in terms of help, however, it's kind of ironic that we get this money from GE to help our town, and then we're putting it back towards fighting them again, and having to use it to do that. So it's, by the end, a huge amount of money. I know it's only a percentage, but it's a terrible spot we're in. So thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor vote aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Motion passes. Next article, Article 12, CPA Appropriation, FY25.
Mr. Moderator, Gordon Bailey, Select Board. Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to act on the report of the Community Preservation Committee, CPC, on the fiscal 2025 Community Preservation Budget, and to appropriate or reserve for later appropriation monies from Community Preservation Fund annual revenues or available, or available funds for the administrative expenses of the CPC, the payment of debt service, the undertaking of CPC projects, and all other necessary and proper expenses for the year. Proposed Fiscal 2025 Community Preservation Budget. The Community Preservation Committee recommends that the following amounts be appropriated or reserved from fiscal year 2024 Community Preservation Fund revenues, unless otherwise specified, for fiscal year 2025 community preservation purposes, with each item considered a separate appropriation. Balance held in the CPA Reserve Fund, $394,946.97. Fiscal Year 25 Estimated Revenue, Town of Lee Surcharge, $160,930.91. State Matching Fund is $32,186, for a total estimated revenue of $193,116.91. Project Appropriations, Lee Community Garden, Pollinator Gardens, $14,000, it's open, out of open money. Space and Recreation, the Kiwanis ADA Ramp, $12,000. Affordable Housing. Historical Society Cemetery Survey, $36,000, it's on historical. Historical Society Exhibit System, $8,000, again, historical section. Historical Commission Historical Records, $16,000, and from historical. Historical Commission, the History of Lee, $14,000. That's $12,318.99 from historical, and $1,681.1 from undesignedated. Lee Sportsman's Club ADA Access to the Range, $26,000 from open funds. Space and Recreation, Lee Bike Path Design Matching Grant, $30,000. Open Space and Recreation, plus $22,677.1 undesignedated. Youth Commission, Athletic Field Improvements, $80,000 undesignedated. Construct, Housing Rental Assistance, $50,000 from Affordable Housing Section. Total appropriate, project appropriations is $280- Total appropriate, project appropriations is two hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars. Administrative Fund is five percent, nine thousand, six hundred and fifty-five dollars and eighty-five cents. Anticipated New Balance Held in Reserve Funds, two hundred and ninety-two thousand, four hundred and eight dollars and three cents.
Second. Any discussion?
Yes.
Go for it.
I need my steps. Uh, Steve Latham, two fifteen, Spring Street. Uh, I'm not familiar with the, uh, the work for the Bike Path, but as a cyclist, I'm interested in hearing something about what is planned in Lee, if somebody could, uh, explain that a bit.
Sure, yeah, so the Bike Path, um, the construction of it is funded through the State TIP Program from Mass D O T. There's a lengthy design process, um, because it's running right alongside the river, basically going from Lee Bank to Big Y. Unfortunately, that design process is taking even longer than expected. Right now, the design is being funded through a federal earmark from Congress. However, that money is expected to run out before they can complete the design. So we have applied for, they actually need a hun, another hundred and fifty thousand almost to finish the design. There's so much environmental, um, things to do there. So we've applied for a state grant for that. If we are awarded the grant, which hopefully we will hear soon, I was hoping to know by tonight, but, um, we would get a hundred and fifty thousand roughly from the state. We have to match it with a percentage, so that's where the thirty thousand goes to. That will allow them to do the second, the additional fifty percent design that needs to be done, and then hopefully we'll go to construction shortly after that, so...
Thank you. I'm getting older, I hope it gets finished.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
I'm loud enough. Marsha Slominski, forty Laurel Avenue.
Pull the mic down, Marsha, a little bit, so you can, everyone can hear you.
So, uh, eighty thousand dollars for a ninja course? Which is for very specific use, as opposed to, as this gentleman said, a, um, Bike Path, Walking Path. Couldn't that money go to something that the rest of the town pe, people could use?
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Josh Bloom from the Lee Youth Commission. Just to clarify, the eighty thousand dollars that is designated for the Lee Youth Commission to have athletic field, uh, improvements, thirty thousand dollars of that is going to, um, expand the skate park. We did consultations with youth skaters from Lee, um, and we worked with, uh, both adult and youth skaters on that design. We will be, uh, filling in the center of the oval loop and squaring off the back corners, basically doubling the size of skateable area, and predominantly making all, all that new area will be flat area. This was a, a request from, from the skate community, and, and the Youth Commission has been investing, um, in, uh, skateboarding for Lee as a, as a youth activity and way to make us distinct as a community in what we're offering. The second piece that we, um, are allocate, we, we are requesting is thirty thousand dollars, uh, sorry, um, sorry, the, the first one was thirty thousand dollars, the second one was fifty thousand dollars, broken down into, um, forty thousand dollars for the deposit for a, um, an obstacle course playground. The obstacle course, and then ten thousand dollars is to go towards a nonprofit consultant who is going to fundraise for the town the remaining costs of the project, uh, which is another approximately hundred and fifty thousand dollars. This is an exciting project insofar as it expands what is already in the athletic field for adult recreation and for older, um, children recreation. We have a toddler play, playground, we have young children playground, and we have now some adult equipment. This bridges the two and, um, and is thought to be able to be accessible, uh, primarily for the ages of, I would say about seven and up, but, um, it's targeted in terms of what the actual equipment says is, is for like thirteen and up. And we think that this will expand the use of, of the athletic field. It's, the positioning is where the, uh, adult equipment is currently, along the tree line of the back, um, expanding, uh, towards where, uh, where there is currently, um, lacrosse played. It does not interfere with lacrosse. We have gone through, uh, the Youth Commission on this. We have gone, we have worked with an engineer to do the design plans to get it through the Conservation Commission, and we have worked with, uh, the, the, uh, Community Preservation Committee to get it through the, uh, Conservation Commission. If people have questions about these two projects, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Bloom. Anybody else? Cornelius, or, sorry, Kathy, you're next.
I would just like to add, everybody knows I'm not an athlete, but I'm certainly a champion for sports, and I know the school song, but I would like to say what's exciting about this, because we went on a site visit, um, that it's a community project. So bringing that cost way down is that the people in the community will come together and build it, and that's very exciting. And we already had that challenge when we did the toddler playground. We had twenty-five volunteers that helped, and we had one consultant that was paid, but everything else was done by Lee residents. So just want to say that it's exciting to have something new, if you vote for it, and that we will be a part of building it. Thank you.
Thank you. Cornelius?
So Cornelius Kalashnikov again, um, I, I spoke to Chris about this. Um, I understand it's the Lee Sportsman's Club. Why it's, uh, can be on here is because it's a not, not-for-profit, because I wondered, it's not open to the public, though. You have to be a member. Um, and, um, so that helped me to understand why it's on here. Um, and then, so undes, undesignated means that thirty thousand would be towards certain things, and then undesignated means it can be towards other project? Is that what it means?
Actually, it's just, it's just, so by, by law, we have to separate out, um, ten percent, a minimum each year has to be spent in the three different categories of housing, open sp, so, um, what that means is we're just, we're using some open space money and then some out of undesignated. The bulk of the money is in undesignated. We do the, we, we have to put ten percent towards each category, and the other seventy percent falls into undesignated.
I have a question. I'm not saying I want to do this, but if, like, that woman had feelings about it, we could separate these out like we did in the beginning and say, wanted, or not?
You, you could move to separate one out, and it wouldn't require a majority vote to pull it out.
Right, just so the town knows that. Thank you.
Mr. Consolati?
Hi, Pat Consolati, Via Maria Lee. I'm also the Treasurer at the Lee Sportsman's Association. For people who aren't familiar, and because there was some incorrect information just stated, uh, we are a five oh one C three, we have about five hundred members, uh, we also run a bunch of youth programs, archery, air pistol, twenty-two pistol. The fields in question where we're looking for the handicap access are open to the public during any, any hours that are open. That's primarily Wednesday nights, Fridays, Saturdays, Sundays. If you want to check our website, you can, you know, all the hours are posted. But that is why it's, uh, it's eligible for this, is because it's, it is open to the public. Thank you.
Thank you. Peg? Mr. DeVal, we got one person in front of you first.
Hi, I'm Peg Byron, and I live at, uh, forty-two Park Street in Lee. And, um, I would just like to commend the people that were on this Community Preservation Committee. This is the first time we've been able to do this, and it's matching, or there's funds that they give to each project. I myself read this, these are all the projects that were put together, um, some by, I, I was so impressed with the people that had these projects put together, and the applications, to me, were wonderful. Just unbelievable, you know, and these kinds of things, we would like to do wonderful things for the Town of Lee. We always can't afford to do it, because we only have so much money, um, to do it. And these community projects throughout the state have been very, very well received, and I commend the people and, on the committee, because it's uncharted territory. And when you're in a new situation, wherever you are, even if you take a new job, it's uncharted territory. So, thank you, and thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you.
So I'm in favor of the twenty-six thousand dollars for handicap access at the Lee Sportsman's Club, because I think that any time that we can, uh, open up opportunities for people that are handicapped, that it's something that we should all look forward to doing.
Hi, I'm Annie Lee, one oh four High Street. I just wanted to speak on, I, I'm on the Youth Commission, but I also want to speak to the ninja course. I think that looking at a town with a declining school enrollment, things that young families can do should be sought out, and the Youth Commission has put on some weekend activities for families, and we did have a ninja night, and it was the most attended and most exciting night. If anyone in that room would see that, the kids were really excited about it, but so were the parents, and opportunities for families like that in Lee should be considered, so...
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, vote aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Motion passes. Next, Article Thirteen, DPW Trucks Plowing Equipment.
Sean Renier, Select Board. Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to authorize pursuant to General Laws, Chapter Forty-four, Section Twenty-one C, upon the recommendation of the Select Board, a lease purchase financing agreement not to exceed four hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars for the acquisition of one Ford F-600 diesel with plow accessories and hook lift beds, one Ford F-250 gas with plow accessories, and one holder sidewalk machine. The foregoing may be acquired through the issuance of debt under General Law, Section Forty-four. Improvement of infrastructure, a capital assessment, the improvement of which may be financed by the issuance of debt under General Law, Section Forty-four. The term of such agreement not to exceed seven years. The useful life of the equipment improvement, as determined by the Select Board, which shall be authorized to enter into such agreement on behalf of the town, subject to approval of an appropriation for the first year payments debt service.
Second it? Second, uh, the Finance Committee, Board of Public Works, and Capital Outlay recommends approval. This requires a two-thirds vote, uh, approval. Okay. Uh, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, vote aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Motion passes. Article Fourteen, Fire EMS Stabilization Fund. Finance Committee and Capital Outlay recommends approval.
Mr. Moderator, just declare the last one unanimously, because it's a debt.
Yes. Okay, Article Thirteen passed unanimously.
Mr. Moderator, Bob Jones, Select Board. I move that the town vote to transfer from fee cat, free cash, to, free cash, the sum of one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to a fire EMS Apparatus Replacement Special Stabilization Fund.
A second, Ed.
Who seconded that? Was that Member Bailey?
Gordon Bailey.
Member Bailey seconded, sorry about that. Any discussion?
So I know this is not what you're, related to the article, but before the end of the evening, I would like to encourage all town people to come on Monday and vote. There's an article attached to...
Yeah, well, we got to stay on topic, please sit down.
Sorry?
We got to stay on topic. That's not discussion at this time.
It's related to fire.
Not to a stabilization.
It's a stabilization fund.
Is there a place in...
Please sit down, thank you.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
I have a question. Is there a place I can say to encourage, encourage people to come vote on Monday?
Yes, after the meeting is over. We'll take care of that, though.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, do we, we got a second? Any, uh, further, no, no more discussion? All those in favor, vote aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Article Fifteen, Home Rule Petition, Firefighter. Have a motion?
Gordon Bailey, Select Board. Mr. Moderator, with pleasure, I move that the town vote to petition the state legislature to adopt the following act. An Act of the Town of Lee to Continue Employment of Assistant Chief Glenn M. Wilcox. Section One, notwithstanding any general or special law to the contrary, Glenn M. Wilcox, Assistant Chief of the Town of Lee, may continue to serve in that position until reaching the age seventy, the date of his retirement, or the date he is relieved of duties by the Town Administrator of the Town of Lee at his discretion, whichever occurs first, provided, however, that he is mentally and physically capable of performing the duties of his office.
Do I have a second?
Uh, I'm not done yet, I'm sorry. I, I paused because of that horrible noise. The Town Administrator may, at the town's own expense, require that Glenn M. Wilcox be examined by a physician designated by the Town Administrator to determine such physical and mental capabilities to perform the duties of his office. No further dedu, deductions, okay, shall be made, deductions it should be. No further deductions shall be made from the regular compensation of Glenn M. Wilcox pursuant to Chapter Thirty-two of the General Laws for service subsequent to his reaching age sixty-five. And upon retirement for superannuation, he shall receive a superannua, annuation, yeah, superannuation, annuation, uh, retirement allowance equal to the allowance that he would have been entitled had he retired upon reaching sixty-five. Section Two, the act shall take effect upon its passage.
Second. Member Renier seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, vote aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Uh, before we, uh, before we go to the next, uh, motion, uh, on behalf of the Town of Lee, I would like to say thank you for your many years of service. We know this, and it's appreciated. Thank you, Glenn. Article Sixteen, General Stabilization Account.
Mr. Moderator, Sean Renier, the Select Board. I move that the town vote to vote, uh, I move that the town vote to create a General Stabilization Fund in accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, Section Five B of Chapter Forty, and to appropriate the sum of twenty-five million dollars to such fund, said appropriation to be transferred from free cash.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Member Jones seconded. Any, uh, further discussion? This is a two-thirds vote. All those in favor, vote aye?
Aye.
No, those opposed, no?
No.
Motion passes unanimously. I'm sorry, motion passes, two-thirds. I apologize. I apologize. Thank you, Mr. DeVal.
Can you expand the slide?
Sorry. We're moving on?
All right.
Article Seventeen, Reappropriate 2019 Reconstruction Design Capital. Carryover.
Uh, Mr. Moderator, Bob Jones, Select Board. I move that the town vote to rea- Mr. Moderator, Bob Jones, Select Board, I move that the town vote to reappropriate the unused sum of $100,000 from the fiscal year 2019 reconstruction design capital, capital to road paving capital for fiscal year 2025.
Second.
Member Bailey seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Motion passes. Article 18, Sewer Assessment Management Grant.
Mr. Moderator, Gordon Bailey, Select Board, I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $325,542 for the FY 2025 Sewer Asset Management Planning Project, which was submitted to the Massachusetts Clean Water State Revolving Fund, SRF, Asset Management Planning Project List and awarded. The total project cost of $325,542 is comprised of a $150,000 grant, which the town will be reimbursed for throughout the project by MassDEP and the Massachusetts Clean Water Trust. The balance of the project will be comprised of in-kind services provided by the town valued at $88,516 and a cash contribution from the town in the amount of $87,026 to be transferred from wastewater retained earnings capital.
Second. Member Renier seconded. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Say no? Motion passes. Article 19, Zoning, Marijuana Permits.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend the Town of Lee zoning bylaw, Section 199-9.11, by removing the stricken text and adding the proposed underlying text as published in Article 19 of the Town, of the annual town meeting warrant.
Mr. Moderator, I second that.
Member Bailey seconded. Mr. Donovan, Board of the Planning Board?
Buck Donovan, Planning Board, also 140 Lander Road. These bylaws were constructed a few years ago, and we're a few years into this, and per request of the Select Board, we took a look at them again, and such changes are here. There's certain items, and since the industry has been around, that everyone felt they needed to be adjusted.
Yep.
John Mooney, Lee.
I've got a question, maybe Planning Board member can answer it. What was the total number of marijuana cultivators prior? I see it's not to exceed one here now.
There was not a limit.
There was not a limit?
No, it was the total would have, the total, we only had total licenses prior to this.
Okay. Why was it limited to one?
Mainly because we've, when we originally wrote it, we missed the possibility of the outdoor growing, how the smell could be a problem, and the industry has proven that even their indoor is still a problem.
I noticed that the outdoor is restricted now, and the indoor, my only concern with this is, we got the Columbia Mill, we got the Graylock Mill, I don't know if anybody's seen the upkeep of the Outlet Village lately and the empty stores, that may be another property in the future that becomes vacant. I wouldn't want to limit, I think we short-sighted, if we limit our options for getting people to come in and utilize these properties.
We've already seen attempts there, and they never came to fruition.
Right, but you're just, you're not, you're limiting it, you're not, you know, attempts fine, if it's worthwhile, it's worthwhile, but I don't think we should limit our options on these properties.
Any further discussion? Oh, Member Bailey?
Yes, Gordon Bailey, Select Board. I'm the one that instigated this change, John.
I know.
Yeah, I was just letting it be out there, okay? We happen to live very near to the one and only cultivation, and I can't tell you how many, how many complaints I get, phone call to me, and how much my wife and I smell this, this odor, and one reason I wanted to, and there's two reasons actually why I wanted to revisit this. Number one is, I don't want to impose this smell that they don't seem to be able to regulate, even though they're indoors and they say they can, on any other neighborhood in the Town of Lee. I just don't think it would be, I don't think it would be right of me to sit here and know that something like this was going to happen in another neighborhood. So, that was one reason, that, and we still have all those other opportunities for, for people to develop the products, you know, not grow it, but they can still do many other, there's still like five other kinds of permits that we can issue that don't involve smells in neighborhoods. And the other is, the other reason is that when this first came about, the Cannabis Commission had a number of rules and regulations which have been substantially changed. The town could enter into host agreements and get money from the cultivators to offset some of the impacts we may have in the community, and not like Great Barrington, we've actually said every year what are, how we feel it's been impacted. So, I don't believe we're open for any kind of reimbursement request, because we, everyone's agreed that there have been impacts, and, but now, the Cannabis Commission changed all the rules. It's almost like a bait and switch at the state level, and all of that's gone. We can no longer enter into these kind of agreements, and as far as the smell goes, if we were to allow it somewhere, our town doesn't even get to decide whether it's stinky or not. They actually send somebody out from Boston from the Cannabis Commission to decide whether it's too stinky, and if they think, eh, it's not so bad, then, then the neighborhood's kind of screwed.
Well, that's one of my problems, too, the odor part of this bylaw, because if I...
Well, that's not on this. The odor part isn't, is a next section, and it doesn't deal with the cannabis smell.
It doesn't deal with the cannabis smell?
No, that's a different issue, and the Planning Board, I'm sure will be able to explain that to you.
Well, I'm sure years ago, when Columbia Mill was running all those years, the stench that came from Columbia Mill, anybody that lived in we, nothing was ever done about that.
Well, we're still dealing occasionally with some other businesses, but that's beside the point. This is just something that I had instigated to try and make sure we protect our other neighborhoods and still allow for cannabis to be, to be a business in town.
Right.
And manufacturing, and development, and transport, and all the other things that you can do as a business, we're still open arms to it. That's all, thank you.
And like I said, I'm concerned about limiting, limiting any possibilities for any business to come in and try to use some of these facilities. And you said now, the part about the odor, has that another part of this bylaw, or?
It was, it was to make things congruent, to make things similar. With the definitions, it's all about definitions?
Kind of what I wanted to understand about that, let me just put it to you bluntly. Say I got a problem with a certain company, and I could just, willy-nilly, can I say that they're offending me, and then, is there action taken against that company?
It would have to be enforcement, probably would go into our building commissioner.
And I...
And there'd be an appeal process and all that, for sure.
I totally understand where you're coming from, I know your vicinity, I know, I drive by the place four times a day, doesn't smell that bad to me, but I don't live next door either, so, and I would like to think that we could work with these people to try to improve that situation somehow. I would, you know, like to think we could, I don't know if we have approached that, or tried to or not, but...
All right, Mr. Cody, can we give, give somebody else a chance here, and then you can come back up? Any other discussion on this?
Mr. Brick?
Mr. Town Administrator?
Town Administrator, Chris Britton. Just wanted to mention, under the current bylaws, it is kind of starting to say, it doesn't distinguish between, it just says, essentially, we have 11 more permits, but they could be anything but retail, so it could be manufacturing, cultivation, research, et cetera. This is just limiting the cultivator part of it, but in theory, we could have 11 more, if the bylaw stays the way it is, we could have 11 more cultivation facilities in the Town of Lee. May not be likely to happen, but it's theoretically possible. As Gordon started to mention, the state made a lot of changes since, since this was done back, and I think about five or six years ago. But, yeah, I mean, the host community impact money is not there anymore for cultivation facilities, there's no retail taxes that we get from those, and the regulations have changed, so the, when you look at the odor part of this that John asked about, the odor is being changed to be consistent with the other odor bylaws, because the state no longer allows the town to treat them any different as far as odor is concerned. So, basically, the idea of this was, you know, for the board was to just bring this out and say, the rules have changed a little bit, there could be 11 more of these, this is a chance, if the town does not want one to come into your neighborhood and potentially have that smell, this is where you want to change it. If it does come into Graylock Mill and you live on Graylock Street, and you're, you find that odor offensive, this is the chance that you have to prevent that. I'm not saying one way or the other, but just explaining the outcome, so.
You should say, what's a yes vote means we're...
Yes vote means you want to change the bylaw, and no vote keeps it the way it is.
Member Renier?
Sean Renier, the Select Board, 60 Tearingham Road. I just wanted to speak to Mr. Cody's point about working with the facility in question. I know Gordon and I and Chris have all been, visited the facility and talked to the owner and the operator and tried to work on the odor mitigation issue, and they are trying different filters and different operations, but it's, hasn't worked to this point, and there's not, there's not, the town doesn't have much leverage to enforce or, you know, potentially even shut them down for violating an odor issue like that.
Mr. Pollard?
Jeremiah Pollard, 230 Summer Street, Town Council. Mr. Donovan, I just want you to give a little more detail about what the Planning Board did for the report for the minutes, for the AG's purposes. I just want to, what did you guys vote? What did you do? What's the Planning Board's report?
Planning, um...
You voted to support?
Yes, we did vote. We vote unanimously, unanimously to support these.
Okay, any more discussion? Courtney, yes?
I thank the Planning Board for carefully reviewing this in detail and underlining things in a clear way that was understandable, and it's, to me, it's not just about the number of possible cultivation in the town, plant, retail, plants, sorry, but, but that this gives a little more clout for trying to enforce things. That's my understanding, and I appreciate that. As a resident in the town, and as people coming off the highway, this smell driving by, I have to close my windows because it really comes in strongly, just driving by, and it's a concern of how we were representing our town, so I do approve of this. Thank you.
Any more discussion?
Tim Seuss, 215 Summer Street. So, I just had a question, first, a point of inquiry. Are Section 1 and Section 2 being voted on together, bundled together in a vote for Article 19?
Yes.
Okay. My second question's about Section 199, 12.6. Does this apply only to marijuana facilities, or is this a general, a general odor regulation?
Mr. Donovan?
Yes, sir, that is out of the general, it's not specifically to the marijuana.
And so, how would this apply in other zones like agriculture, where on Summer Street, for instance, we live near Hylon Farm, where there is frequently the smell of cow manure, however, we would not want Hylon Farm to be a regulatory action to be brought against Hylon Farm?
Pretty much agriculture is exempt from everything.
Okay, thank you.
Please refrain from yelling out, it's not helpful. We could not hear Mr. Donovan's reply, but either come to the mic...
Well, I couldn't hear you.
Your reply. We couldn't hear your reply.
I just said agriculture is exempt from any of that.
Just have to jump in here, Caroline Young, 755 Maple Street, from the Agricultural Commission. Lee has a right to farm law. Farmers can do what farmers need to do to farm, and nobody can stop them.
Hi, Alexandra Hettinger, Silver Street. I have a question about this Section 2, and the, that there's no emission of noxious matter or objectionable odors, and, you know, all the other points on here. You've talked about the facility, and how driving by, and at your house, or, you know, in the neighborhood, you can smell that. How will this, these changes to this Section 2 impact an existing business in town?
Member Bailey?
As far as I know, it won't impact it at all. This doesn't change anything, it predates the, if you're talking about cultivation only, it's not going to change anything. And we actually, the board actually entered into an agreement to, with this particular cultivator, to take all the money they owed us in, in the host agreement, and put it toward their filtration and system, and supposedly, they're working on it, but, you know, that's all I can tell you, but it doesn't affect them, they stay in business, nothing happens, as far as that goes. No, no, not at all. That's not the intent of that.
All right, Mr. Cody?
I just want clarity on this, because I thought Chris said there was allowable more than one cultivator, but this specifically says one cultivator only in the Town of Lee, that's it.
The current bylaw allows for up to 11 more. This would take it down to one, which is the one that we have.
Okay.
So, if that one went out of business, another could get the permit, but it would be just one.
Okay. Like I said, I still have the same concern about limiting reuse. Thank you.
Hi.
New information?
Well, my second, I kind of have another question, and regarding this right to farm law, and isn't growing marijuana a form of farming? No?
No.
Okay. Just want to make sure we weren't conflicting with ourselves. Thanks.
All right, do we have any new comments, any new questions, or can we move on? All right, seeing no more discussion, I'll, as long as it's new information, or new question.
A new question? All right, well, I don't know, maybe I, I know we have a right to farm law.
Speak, yes.
Del Ceresia, 161 West Park Street. I know we have a right to farm law, which I think is wonderful, and these noxious, noxious odors or whatever, I use cow manure on my, on my gardens.
That was our, we already went over this, it's all set.
It's going to be under the agriculture?
No, it's, it's under agriculture, we've already covered this, it's not new information.
No, no, you haven't covered it, because this is a little house, it's not a farm.
Okay.
Okay? It's just a house, it's not a farm, it's garden, you know, just flower gardens, so I...
It's your house, you're okay.
I'm okay.
I believe.
All right.
Okay. Well, just a clarification on the odor, and Buck, if I'm saying this wrong, let me know, but that, that bylaw is already there. The purpose of this was to make the odor section for cannabis be the same as all of the other odor bylaws, so we're not singling out one industry. So, that was why this was changed.
Mr. Duval, please state your name and your address.
David Duval, 620 Stockbridge Road. Just concerned whether this conflicts with the general referendum that was passed in Massachusetts in any way.
Anyone want to take that?
Sure.
Okay. Mr. Pollard?
Jeremiah Pollard, Town Council. It does not conflict with the referendum. The referendum itself provided that any town or city could ban marijuana establishments in their entirety, so only one Berkshire County town that I know of did that, which was Monterey. The, the original, and you've heard it, originally, we could charge an impact fee, what have you, and that turned out to be nothing other than a bait and switch. We put our money aside, because my, I advised doing that, because I, I thought that was going to happen, that they were going to say, you can't, can't keep the money, and that's happening, and now Bloom Brothers, other, other marijuana... And now Bloom Brothers, other marijuana establishments are suing the cities and towns for the impact fees they had. When that happened, I was surprised that every municipality in the state didn't just outright ban them, but they haven't. So now what you have is tweaks to the referendum. One of those tweaks, for purposes of our discussion tonight, is 48, Section 3 excludes marijuana cultivation as agriculture. So it's not agriculture, it's not exempt like farming, like Hyland or other farms, any farms that are five acres or more. So what we're doing tonight is allowed by the referendum, allowed by the general laws and doesn't run afoul of that. And we can, we could go to zero on all of them. The ones that exist would be pre-existing non-conforming, but what the proposal is tonight is to limit to one.
Okay, any more discussion? Voting yes to change the bylaw, voting no to keep it the same? So two thirds vote? All those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion passes. Article 20, zoning, amend accessory dwelling units, two thirds vote. Mr. Blum?
Oh, I, you want to make a motion?
Oh, sorry, we're ahead of you.
Mr. Moderator.
One o'clock.
Mr. Moderator, Bob Jones, Select Board. I move that the town vote to amend the town of Lee zoning bylaw, Section 199, 4.5, by adding the proposed underlying text as published in Article 20 of the annual town meeting warrant.
Mr. Moderator, second.
Member Bailey, second.
Peter Blum, 75 Orchard Street, member of the Planning Board. We have recently adopted an accessory dwelling unit bylaw. We have also recently adopted a short-term rental bylaw. And at our last meeting, there was some discussion about how those two would interact. There was, some of you may remember, there was an amendment made that was defeated, but the Planning Board went back to work after that event and we realized that there was an adjustment, that we needed to make those two acts fit together better. And the problem had to do with if you get an accessory dwelling unit either in your house, attached or detached, sort of in the backyard, so to speak, when can you use either your main property or the ADU as a short-term rental? And what we have now is a proposal that the Planning Board asked, and we did, tabulate what the effects would be if this were to pass. And if you would turn to, turn the page to the continuation, on the same page as Article 21 begins, at the top of that page, there's a table and it shows the four different cases that can arise. The first two are where the ADU is part of the main building. I think of this as like a mother-in-law apartment upstairs or in the back. And the second set of cases is the ADU in a separate building. And what we are changing is two of the four outcomes here. We're proposing to change the first outcome and allow STR rentals where an ADU is part of the main building, in other words, what I call the mother-in-law apartment, can be rented as a short-term rental. We don't think that will harm the availability of housing in Lee in any significant way. The second change is the last row, not allowed, where it's in a separate building. And this was the subject of the amendment that failed at the last meeting. If the STR rental proposed is of the main house and there's a separate, separate ADU dwelling in the backyard, neither dwelling, neither of them could be rented for short-term rental. And we did this in order to protect the availability of rental unit, longer-term rentals in town, believing that there's a shortage of long-term rentals.
Thank you. Any discussion? Any further discussion?
Peter, what was the Planning Board's vote? What did they do?
He's asking what the vote was.
Yeah, the vote was unanimous, as I recall.
Oh, one abstention?
Okay, thank you, Buck. Oh, yeah. Well, of those who voted, it was unanimous. The chairman has abstained because he had a conflict.
Understood. Thank you.
All right, seeing no more discussion. All those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No.
Abstained.
Motion passes. All right, before we get to our last article, I want to remind everyone to vote on Monday. Okay? And I want to thank the Finance Committee and the members of the Capital Outlet Committee. All right, Article 21, zoning, split zones, it's a two thirds vote.
Mr. Moderator, Gordon Bailey, Planning Board, or, we haven't talked in Planning Board too long, Select Board member. Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend the town of Lee zoning bylaw by amending Appendix A, Table of Dimensional Requirements, Table 1 of 2, as published in the Article 21 of the annual town meeting warrant.
Second. Member Renier, second. Discussion? Mr. Donovan?
Yes, Buck Donovan, Planning Board. We have multiple lots in town where the zoning line actually divides the lot. So last year, we came up with a proposal. It was very lenient, lot of discretion for the Planning Board, it got defeated. We went back to the drawing board and came up with this, little bit of more compromise with changing the setback and only allowing a 50-foot extension into the second zone. Hoping that this'll facilitate some of those properties that are in a commercial district to be reutilized and be commercial again, because right now with how they're set up, they're just not functional for anything, so.
How was the vote?
And the vote was unanimous, 5-0.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Buck, Cornelius right behind you.
So last, as you said, Buck, last year, we voted no. And I have a question, I'm trying to understand this one more. How does this fit into our proposed, into our master plan? That's one question. Because I don't like constantly changing our zoning to fit things. And I wanted to know what you feel, Gordon, specifically. I know you were opposed last time, I want to know how you feel now.
Gordon Bailey, Select Board. Yes, I led the charge to kill it last time because I thought it was overly broad. This is only allowing 50 additional feet and it's by, is it by special permit?
Yes.
And it's by special permit. And also, they did some other manipulations where the front setback in certain zones are 75 feet. And so that got adjusted to be much more reasonable and to allow, so they don't need to go so far in the back. So it's not just the issue of the 50 feet, there's other adjustments that were made to the dimensional table, which made it much more palatable and not anywhere near as broad as the last, so I wasn't going to speak to this.
Thank you.
Member Renier?
So could you-
Oh, sorry, I apologize, you keep going.
I was just wondering about the master plan and where this fits in. Thanks.
I was going to speak to that. Sean Renier, 60 Tearingham Road, Select Board. I was the representative from the Select Board on the master plan and I don't believe that we made a specific recommendation about split zoning. Peter will correct me, I'm sure, if I'm wrong on that. But one way or the other, we didn't make a specific recommendation about split zoning. I think in general, our conversations were about trying to help encourage new development and redevelopment too as well, so.
So I agree for improving our town through proper development, but I don't want to keep doing this spot change of our zoning. And so I want this to be looked at in terms of our master plan and not just changing it so that we can just fill in some new properties. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Gail?
Okay, I'm Gail Cerazia, 161 West Park Street. Do you have any schematics of what you're trying to propose? It would be nice to have a visual with this particular zoning change. Like I know like on Route 102, you know, so right now, you have to go back 75 feet before you start your building? Is that what it is?
Mr. Donovan?
Can you explain it?
Yes, it is, and the setback would be changed to-
40 feet?
40 feet, yes.
And then, like, okay, so I know that those, that's where I know the property's split. I don't know anyplace else in town right now. So, so say their property, you know, that's two lots or that's zone, the zoning line goes, fractures the lot?
Yes, it's the lot right in half.
Okay, so, so this is saying you can go back another 50 feet?
Mr. Donovan, can you go to the other mic so we can have this back and forth a little faster? And so everyone can hear.
Gail, it's not only 102, going out Route 20 towards East Lee is also split zoned. We have split zones on Fairview Street. I believe there's some on Spring and High Street. So what this means, if where that zoning line goes through your property, you can extend 50 feet from the frontage property zone. So the frontage property's RB and behind it is, say, R20, you can go only 50 feet, you cannot go further than that.
Okay, all right. So if it's agricultural up front, then it wouldn't matter because you're not trying to develop it? Okay.
All right, thanks.
Okay, any further discussion? All right, seeing none, all those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion passes. Before we dissolve the meeting, want to call on Chief Brown for a minute.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I want to thank everyone tonight for passing the Glenn Wilcox bill because the institutional knowledge that we lost this year because Deputy Chief Ed North was forced to retire at 70 years of age was huge. Losing Glenn at the same time would be even huger. So I just wanted to take a moment at the end of the town meeting to point at the man that voted no. Because if you know Ed North, that's what he does. Ed, could you just stand up and 52 years of dedicated service to the town of Lee, and I just want to say thank you very much, Ed. Thank you for that time, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Chief. All right, mo-
Motion to dissolve?
That's what I was going to say. I'll entertain a motion to dissolve.
Second.
See you next year.